Good evening. Oh, thank you. Good evening. Welcome to the, I have to look at the date. It's March 20th, 2024, meeting of the Quincy Planning Board. If we could just do the roll call.
Ali Shaw, is he present?
John Kelly, present.
Kimberly Bealyn, present.
P J Foley, present.
Right. And then a vote on the minutes of February 21st, 2024, meeting. Has everybody had a chance to review those?
Motion to approve.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Just at the beginning, I'll read about the open meeting law. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. The board requests that everybody please be courteous and turn off your cell phones. The planning board reserves the right to administer oaths through the chair, summon witnesses, call for the production of papers, cross-examine any person giving testimony during the proceedings, declare recess, limit debate, inspect the subject site or buildings during reasonable hours, and adjourn the hearing. The order of business will be announced by me. Any questions will be directed through the chair. Any person wishing to speak, please raise your hand for recognition. When recognized, please stand, state your name and address, specific interests in the proceedings, and special credentials, if any, pertaining to the presentation. When you do speak, please speak slowly and within the context of the hearing matter. The hearing is being scenographed and taped for the public record. The planning board reserves the right to exclude any unnecessary, irrelevant, repetitive, or harassing presentations. And with that, the first continued public hearing is 10 Independence Avenue, Planning Board Case Number 2024-01.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Members of the board, my name is Patrick Foley, representing 10 Independence Avenue. We're just requesting a continuance to next month's Planning Board meeting. We're still working on some stuff on our plans and work with the planning department on some issues.
Okay. And one month is sufficient?
I think so.
Yeah, the applicant has provided some revised plans within the last week, and we even received an updated landscape plan this week. So as is the board's policy, you know, they'd like to receive major information at least one week prior to the meeting. So we're still going through that review. It was out to the technical review. So we think one month should be sufficient to get through that review and move on from that point.
Okay. So is there a motion to continue to, what is it?
It's going to be, I got it, April 17th.
Okay.
Motion to continue 10 Independence Avenue, April 17th.
Okay, is there a second?
Second the motion.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the continued public hearing for 62 and 68 Albertina Street, Planning Board Case Number 2024-02.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the board, for the record, my name is Edward Fleming. I'm here on behalf of the applicant on this matter. We don't have any additional information to provide to the board tonight. We're certainly here to answer any questions that you may have. Since the last hearing date, Chi Man has worked diligently to respond to the peer review comments and the DPW's comments most specifically, and we think that we've appropriately addressed those comments. We're ready to ask any questions.
Okay. Let's see if anybody has questions for you. Any questions on hand? I also do not have any questions. Is there anyone here from the public wishing to speak on this application? It's application number 62 and 68 Albertina Street, 2024-02. There's also sign-in sheets, so if you're for or against, you can always sign in if you don't feel like or don't desire to come up to the podium and speak. Once, anyone else? Anyone? Okay. Does, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And does the department have a recommendation?
Yes, through you, Madam Chair, to the board. After consideration of the site plan accompanying documents and the comments received from city staff and the peer review consultant, the department recommends the board approve site plan review under Quincy zoning ordinance title 17, section 9.5.1, site plan review and special permit under sections 5.1.17, parking waiver, subject to the below-listed special and general conditions. Sorry, I've been putting the glasses on. Getting old up here. Special condition one, the applicant shall obtain all necessary variances and if applicable, special permits from the City of Quincy zoning vote of appeal. Two, the applicant shall reconstruct the sidewalk for the entirety, entire property franchise along Albertina Street with bituminous concrete sidewalk and bituminous berm as specified by the Department of Public Works. Three, prior to the issuance of the building permit, the applicant shall provide a final paving plan for the proposed work on Branch Street, including all utilities and grading, and submit that to the Department of Public Works for review and approval. Four, the applicant shall be responsible for the maintenance and plowing of all roads and sidewalks on private property. The applicant shall be responsible for the maintenance and repair of all private utilities serving the project located on or under private property. Five, one week prior to any land disturbance activities, the applicant shall conduct an onsite inspection with the City of Quincy and/or the city's designated representative to observe erosion controls installed at the site and review the erosion controls anticipated to be employed during construction. Six, the existing pipes and manholes on Albertina Street shall be inspected with television pre and post development in order to check the condition of the system. The television report and video clip shall be submitted to the city engineer for assessment. Seven, the proponent shall notify the city engineering office for the purposes of inspecting the construction of the stormwater management system at the following times: once upon completion of excavation, upon completion of chamber and crushstone installation, and prior to backfill, and the applicant shall provide at least 72 hours' notice of said inspections. Eight, the entire proposed stormwater and sewer system shall be cleaned and flushed prior to its final acceptance. Nine, prior to the issuance of an occupancy permit, the applicant shall submit a long-term operation and maintenance plan for the project's stormwater system, which shall include the following: inspection and maintenance of catch basin and manhole; the storm scepter should follow the manufacturer's recommendations; identify any limitations on the use of salt and/or de-icing chemicals, if any; a minimum of three years of inspection and cleaning records shall be available for review; inspection shall be conducted by a qualified professional; and the maintenance plan shall be recorded at the Norfolk County Registry of Deeds. The applicant, special condition number 10, the applicant shall conduct a pre-demolition hazardous material survey, i.e. asbestos-containing materials, fluorescent lights, PCB-containing materials, including ballast, mercury-containing thermostats and switches, et cetera, and provide a copy of the survey to the Quincy Health Department. If hazardous materials are found in the buildings to be demolished, the applicant or its licensed abatement contractor shall consult with the Quincy Health Department regarding abatement measures and monitoring of abatement work. Eleven, the applicant shall consult with the Quincy Health Department on noise mitigation measures for the project-related noise generating activities to comply with local and state regulations. Twelve, the applicant shall submit a written rodent control plan to the Health Department for review and approval prior to any site activity. Said plan must be designed for the duration of the project and include at minimum the following: naming contact information of a licensed pest control operator to be retained by the project proponent for the duration of the project; scope of the proposed plans for the control of rodents, including number, location, and frequency of monitoring bait stations, and anticipated length of service; and a summary of actions to be taken to prevent rodent problems at the construction site. Thirteen, the applicant shall develop and submit in a written dust control plan and submit to the Department of Public Health for review and approval prior to any site activity. Said dust control plan is to be implemented during any site activities to ensure compliance with state air quality regulations. Fourteen, prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall provide a final exterior lighting plan to the planning department for review and approval. Fifteen, the applicant shall submit a construction management plan to be filed and approved prior to the issuance of a building permit. This shall include the locations of stockpile and/or staging areas for construction equipment and materials. The applicant shall also address construction period traffic impact by providing a detailed sequence of construction and addressing any space constraints and detailing how they'll be addressed as construction progresses. Sixteen, the applicant shall submit an AutoCAD file for the project prior to the issuance of a building permit. The file should be in a mass state plane coordinate system and preferably in Quincy standard data layers. Seventeen, upon completion of construction, the applicant shall submit a report including certified ASBIL plan from a professional engineer or surveyor, certifying that the stormwater management system has been constructed in accordance with the approved plans. The report should include a certification that the excavations of the proposed systems were inspected prior to backfilling. The applicant shall also provide the city engineer the digital file ASBIL plan showing all utilities, building footprints, reference bounds, and benchmarks defining the total site, facilities, and rates of wait, along with an AutoCAD file. ASBIL plan shall be in mass state plane coordinate system. Plan should be stamped and signed by a professional land surveyor or professional engineer. Upon completion of the project, submit, the applicant shall submit a stamped affidavit from a registered professional engineer that all utilities, water, sewer, and drain are constructed as designed and no illicit connections are found on the completed project site. That would complete the department's recommendation.
Okay. Great. Would anybody like to make a motion, please?
Make a motion that we approve the project with the 18 recommendations as read by Mr. Stevens.
Is there a second?
All circled out.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? That's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
I think Ted's representing the next one.
Oh.
Ed, are you ready to?
Yes.
Okay.
It'll take me a second to read it and, anyway.
Hurry up, Eddie. Hurry up.
So the next matter on the agenda is a public hearing, 2426 Branch Street, Planning Board Case Number 2024-04. This public hearing shall be conducted to review the application of Austin Realty Proprietaryship LLC of 29 Adams Street, Braintree, Mass. 02184, for site plan review under Quincy zoning ordinance title 17, section 9.5.1, site plan review, and special permits under sections 5.1.17, parking waiver. The applicant proposes to renovate the existing two-family house and construct a single townhouse at the rear of the building and build three additional townhouses on the right side of the parcel for a total of six units. The townhouses will be three stories in height, each with a two-car garage in the first level and living area above. The townhouses will be served by two driveways from Branch Street, and four additional surface parking spaces will be provided for a total of 12 spaces. The project will include professionally-designed drainage control measures and professionally-designed landscaping. The property contains 12,000 plus or minus square feet of land and is located at 24 to 26 Branch Street. The subject property is located within an industrial A zoning district and shown on Assessor's map 3099, lots 9, plot 48. Turn it on.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the board. Again, for the record, my name is Edward Fleming. I'm here on behalf of Steve Austin, the manager of Austin Realty Proprietaryship, who is the applicant here tonight. This matter, as you indicated, involves the renovation and construction of six new, you know, four new townhouse units for a total of six units. The property is a 12,000-square-foot parcel of land at 24 Branch Street. We're seeking tonight site plan approval, as well as a special permit parking waiver from this board. With me tonight is Steve Austin, the manager of the applicant, Brian Donahue of Donahue Architects, who has designed the architectural plans, and we'll talk about those in more detail in a moment, as well as Tim Power of PVI Site Design, who is the site engineer on this matter, and will highlight and discuss the site matters as well as drainage. As you indicated, Madam Chair, the property is located in an industrial A zoning district. Interestingly enough, as when the city rezoned the area for the Quincy Adams Transit-oriented District, they rezoned a very large area of this land. Unfortunately, this site wasn't included in that rezoning district. Had this site been included in that, it would have provided this for this site not only to have the right to do residential as a right, but also much denser residential use. But having looked at the neighborhood and owned this property for some time, Mr. Austin felt like this townhouse-style development really fit better with the neighborhood, very more consistent with the houses across the street on Branch Street, but also a lot of the homes along Albertina Street, which is a project that we just discussed a moment ago, which includes a lot more single, two families, three family, and townhouse-style units in that location. We think that what this proposal is, is therefore to take the existing two-family home, to remodel or renovate the existing two-family home, maintain those two units within that facility, add a townhouse unit to the rear of that existing two-family, and construct three new townhouses on the site. Rather than me getting into too much detail on this, I'd like to turn this over to Brian Donahue, let Brian kind of walk through this, and then we'll turn it over to Tim and talk about site. Right?
I'm chair, members of the board, Brian Donahue, Donahue Architects. Firstly, I'd like to say that I've done a number of projects with Mr. Austin, and I guarantee that his workmanship and the quality of product that he produces is first-rate all the way. This project is, as Ed mentioned, a 12,000-square-foot lot in the industrial A zone. Our proposal is to renovate the existing house, which is this unit, this unit in the front left corner there. And at this point in time, Mr. Austin has already started the renovation to that building. He's putting new siding on, new front porch, and at the time that we do this project, he'll be doing some interior renovations at those two units as well. So behind that, we've got a connector, a connecting stair that will be an egress stair for the existing house, and then we've got a three-bedroom, three-bath townhouse style behind it. To the right of the site, we've got a three-townhouse unit building. These townhouses are relatively on the small side. They're 25 by 25, so the living space on the three-unit building is, they're about 1,250 square feet of living space, plus the garage and entryway. The unit on the left behind the existing house is a little bit larger, about 1,500 square feet of living space. The elevation at the top kind of gives you the feel for what this will look like from the street. We're trying to match the architecture with pitch crews and material consistency throughout. So it also shows that there's a significant space between the two buildings, about 35 feet if you go to the next slide. So these are the overall four plans. I won't bore you with the details of them, but the building on the top is the three-unit townhouse, so you can see the second floor is living space, kitchen, dining area, going up to two bedrooms and two baths for each of those units. On the lower left is the other unit, which is three bedrooms, same kind of configuration. The drive between the two buildings is servicing, maybe Joe, if you go back to the one before. The new drive to the right is servicing the garages for four new units. The site is relatively flat, there's little and no topography for it, so we won't have to do much in terms of regrading, and these are all slab-on-grade, so there'll be little, very little disturbance of the soil conditions there. So this is the architectural elevations on the bottom left. You can see the actual bottom elevation. You can see the relationship between the existing house and the new unit, which is a little bit taller. The ridge line is 35 feet on all these buildings. It doesn't exceed 35 feet, but you can see because we've got parking underneath, there's a little bit of height difference between the two buildings. And up on the right, you can see the facade for the driveway entry on the lower left and the abiding property on the left, on the right, top elevation. So these three-dimensional renderings give you a better feel for how this would be realized in terms of the scale, relationship to the existing house, and the neighboring building. On all sides of this building, front, two sides, and in the rear are industrial properties. However, the nature and the context of Branch Street, across the street, is all single and multi-family, so it's not unusual to have a residential building in this neighborhood. Tim can get into a little bit of the landscaping here. We've got some significant green areas that we hope to landscape. In terms of site lighting, it's going to be minimal. I would say that the lighting for this will be strictly surface-mounted lights at the entryways, over the garage, at the doors, into the units. And the only possibility of any site lighting would be some bollards in the center along the driveway to just make it safe for folks coming and going. Back of the three-unit building may have, there are some man doors there, we may have some lighting on the doors there. So that in a nutshell is the architectural presentation. If anybody has any questions, happy to answer them.
Any questions? Yes.
I have a question.
Sure.
Good evening.
How are you?
Looking at the picture there, so we have the three on the right, and there's parking underneath on all three on the right?
Yes.
And then the one on the left there, there's parking underneath that one?
Yes, two spaces for each unit.
Okay, and the existing, no parking for that one?
Well, right now, there's a driveway that the tenants use for that, and if you can go back to the site plan, we're showing that those spaces, thanks, Joe, those spaces will be exterior spaces, two spaces in the rear, and two spaces on the drive. We think that the driveway on the right side there is significantly wide enough to have guest parking, and I believe that there is street parking, you know, we never make that assumption, but I think there's significant paving here to have parking spaces for each unit. And right now, there is no garages or anything for the existing two-family. So they've got tandem spaces and then the two in the back.
Branch Street is the one that's down at the bottom, there was a site plan, right?
Yes.
Coming out?
Yes.
So on the left-hand side, there's not going to be any covered parking at all, just outside parking, right?
Yes.
Because the existing, there's no room to do it?
Not really. You know, we could create a garage there, but I think that this is kind of the way these folks are used to, they're used to parking outside. But the new units providing the two spaces for them. And in this, the arithmetic is that it's a 12,000-square-foot lot with six units, so we're really providing 2,000 square feet for bolling, which I think is a good number.
I guess my next question, this is currently zoned industrial, correct?
Right.
So what would prevent, unless it just changed, what would prevent someone, let's say, one of the, these going to be apartments or condos?
Probably rentals or, I'm not sure yet.
So what would prevent someone, say, is bringing home a truck every evening? It's zoned industrial, and he's parking his truck because he lives in the existing two-family, like, what would stop him from doing that?
I suppose you could create any hypothetical, but this is the way the folks that live there now park. So we're assuming that it wouldn't get exacerbated by anybody else coming?
Well, I don't know if I would assume anything about exacerbation, especially in an industrial area. I can't imagine, and I'm not trying to beat you up on this, but if you have a beautiful new layout here, and I like the landscaping, I think it looks very nice, I like the idea that you incorporated the existing two-family, I think that's awesome. But what scares me, honestly, is that, so I move in there across the street, I'm spending $2,500 a month to rent the place, I love the landscaping, and all of a sudden, you know, Paul comes in with his dump truck every afternoon at 4:00, because he's a hard-working, blue-collar guy, and he thinks because he's spending $2,200 a month, he can park his truck right there in the front of his unit, and actually, he probably can park his truck right there in the front of the unit because it's zoned industrial.
May I just respond to your question?
You may, Mr. Fleming.
I would suggest that that will be prohibited by the ownership.
Ah, is it going to be prohibited by the ownership? I'll suggest that it's going to be prohibited.
It would be prohibited by the ownership, that no commercial, large commercial vehicles that can't fit in those particular parking spaces can utilize that, those parking spaces. Because we have to, because it's a good point, we do have to maintain, and we're trying to maintain, four spaces for that two-family.
Because it looks nice.
So if someone, if someone were to bring a large vehicle, a large commercial vehicle that was going to take up more than was allowed in the parking, it would be prohibited from, and they'd have to park that commercial vehicle else.
On the other side of the fence?
It would be, it might be permitted, it might be permitted in the zoning, but it won't be prohibited, permitted by the ownership.
And the ownership?
Or the condominium association, whoever it's.
If it became a condominium, okay. And the owner is here, and he's the one that's going to say, hey, you can put your F-150 there, not a problem.
Exactly.
But if you come in here with your 550 and your eager-beaver trailer, see you later, Sam, right?
Right, you have to find else, park else.
Awesome.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
If I may, okay. Tim Power, just talk about the site.
Okay.
Thank you, board members. Again, Tim Power, PVI Site Design, civil engineer. Brian did a great job actually describing most of the site, so I won't repeat that, really, and Ed did a great job talking about the zoning, so it kind of leaves me with just drainage and utilities. As Brian said, it's fairly flat site, just a little bit of pitch from the back left corner, bottom left corner you see there, out to the front, top right, that we are sort of building right to, and even when we do the parking lot, we're going to grade right to it as best we can, really leave it alone. If you go down another two sheets, I think I have the utility plan that we can point at. So sort of built as two, kind of like two properties from a utility perspective. The existing building, we think we can reuse the sewer there, that's why you don't see a new sewer connection into that building, so kind of piggyback off of what's coming off that house. The new three units will have all new separate utilities all up to the street on its own there, sewer, water, gas, et cetera. The stormwater, again, fairly straightforward, we're just proposing two separate changer systems to pick up roof and a little bit of surface runoff as well. We provided a stormwater report that shows we beat the stormwater management standards and mitigation, control, and treatment and whatnot, so again, not too complicated, won't touch on it too much. We did do a landscape plan as well, again, nothing too fancy. There's some trees around the edges and in the back, we're going to retain, kind of shown in the lighter green massing, and then adding some trees and shrubs just around to try to fill out the corners, so to speak, but maintain a lot of grass area, a lot of open space around buildings. I'll keep it short, sweet, happy to answer questions.
You look, mark it will come here and on the ground? Etc.
What's that?
Fall under etc.
Yes. Yep.
Okay.
Remember Foley, any?
Fine, thank you.
One more quick. And you mentioned gas, so these are going to be gas-fired heat in there, are you going to do it electric? What's going on here?
You know, we showed gas kind of as a matter of practice. I know this new building code goes electric, and then it's gas.
Is there a new building code that says it has to be electric?
I don't know that for sure. I'm looking for that.
I don't know, right?
Not yet.
That's good. Let's hope not, right? Can I say let's not, I hope not, I hope not. I can say, oh. Great.
Okay. So I did have some questions about, I guess, the parking, too. So I know that there was some indication that there would be guest parking. Where would that be provided on the site? Where would there be room?
Sure. I think what we tried to do was design kind of a wide driveway on the left of the house and to provide for, you know, a wide enough driveway that potentially could, that could house some additional vehicles in there. I mean, we've kind of showed two spaces at the end of the driveway and then two kind of perpendicular spaces along the driveway, but we think that it's wide enough certainly to house additional vehicles. They will block each other at times, and there's going to have to be some level of cooperation in getting in and out of the house or in and out of the driveway, but we think that because it's wide enough, it will allow for some visitor spaces. I'm not sure, Brian, if you think that the other parking, other driveway is wide enough as well to allow for parking in front of the garage?
No, it's not, certainly not, even though it's front of the garage, but you can see the green space between the existing house and drive. I mean, we just didn't want to pave everything from building to building. We wanted to soften it up and have some green there. So actually, we could expand that another seven or eight feet and probably have almost a legitimate parking space along that line. But I thought it was, to me, it was a trade-off of having more green space as opposed to having a designated guest parking spot.
And to also respond to your comment, too, I mean, our hope is that the parking numbers aren't going to necessarily require two spaces per unit. So some of the, even though each of the units are provided two spaces, if any of the tenants have less than two, those spaces will then be available for guest parking as well. You know, we, I think we provided two because we wanted to be generous on that parking. We know that the streets are somewhat limited on the ability to park on Branch Street, it's a somewhat narrow street, but we think two certainly is going to be more than adequate to provide parking for this development. As you know, a lot of the parking that's happening through another developments throughout the city of Quincy, especially a lot of them in business. the city of Quincy, especially a lot of them in business C categories are providing a one and a half or less than that, one and a half spaces per unit. So two spaces here is actually somewhat generous. And we think that because this is in close proximity to T, we're going to, we're going to have the same types of tra, types of commuter travelers that the 325-unit development just, just one block away is going to have, which has a much different parking ratio, as you know, it probably has a 1.4 parking ratio. So we think that because we're providing two per unit, there will be adequate parking for visitors.
Yeah, I mean, I guess the concern that I would have with that is that there's two, so you have two per unit in four of the units, right? So it's not as if those are open to, you know, guests, property, right? They're exclusively for those.
Well, they could be for the tenant, so if the tenant has a guest over, they could certainly park within the secondary space in their garage, so they could invite their visitors to do so. But I understand what you're saying, the, the spaces that are going to be visible to everyday visitors to the site will be the parking spaces that are available on the driveway, you know, to the, to the, you know, looking at it here, to the right of the, the two-family. And our hope is that some of those spaces will be available for tenants or for visitors.
In short, I think one comment about that, if you look at bottom part of the site, that extension of, of side, of paving is actually backout space for those, the two units that are right next to it. So that actually could be extended to the property line, and you could have a guest space or two there. I, I don't think we'd like to do that, but that's another option, though, because that extended out would probably give you about 18 feet, could move the drive back, so you could move the buildings, place the building on the left a little closer to the street, it's kind of lined up with the existing house, so rather not, but there are some other options here for possible guest space.
I was going to ask about the, the front setback, so what's the setback on the existing and, and what's the setback on the proposed?
The existing house, not including the porch, is, it's 16 feet, I'm sorry. Yes, it's 16 feet from, about 16 feet from the rear line, eight feet on the side, and 13 feet in the front. The porch on the existing house is much closer.
And then, I guess, a question as well, so, I mean, these structures are, I think, I, I, I like the, the maintenance of the existing structure, I think, as, as Ally said, I think that's a great idea and concept. I do have some concern about kind of this wall that's facing the frontage on the new structure, just because it has a totally different kind of streetscape, and there are single-family residences across the way. I think this changes, at least in my opinion, to some extent, the, the character of, of what's going on in the neighborhood. So perhaps if you could look into adding a front door, a porch, something that makes it a little bit, probably more in keeping with the neighborhood, if that's possible, I think that that would be good to see, at least from, from my perspective as well.
I, I, I have something else I'd like to ask. I don't know if it's a, if it's a councilor, if it's the architect, or maybe both, and this is from personal experience. So industrial areas, what ends up happening when you start to get residential stuff put into industrial areas is that, like, they'll spend, like, in, in town in South Boston where our family business was for many years, we were there for a long time, it's an industrial area, the next thing you know, the company next to us sells out, they move, they put in a high-priced condominium right next to it. So now, all of a sudden, at seven o'clock in the morning when we're starting up equipment, and we have to back up the equipment, you get backup alarms, backup alarm beep, 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 well, the person that just moved in, they didn't realize, or they didn't think about the fact that these industrial areas, they're industrial, so they work a lot of hours, they make noise, so the next thing you know, something that was industrial has become a residential area, and now they're getting phone calls down to the, the public works or down to the building department to say, you know, I'm spending $2,200 a month here, and at seven o'clock in the morning, I don't need an alarm clock, I just wait until the guy next door at six o'clock starts up his Mac Tractor, and that wakes me up every morning, and I'm kind of tired, and I'm spending this kind of money for rent, and what, so what is protecting the industrial owner that pays a higher tax rate than the residential owners? What's going to, what's going to prevent these people that have moved in there to say, hey, you know, something, I keep hearing backup alarms all the time, and you can't shut them off because it's against the law? And the guy who used to run his business, or girl who used to run his business, early in the morning, depending on what time, they have to make a delivery, the next thing you know, this residential area is surrounded by industrial area that could do whatever they wanted to do before to run their business profitably, is now getting hindered by the resident that just moved in, because now they think that the green acres is, is set in the middle of, and I'm not, don't misunderstand me, I'm not trying to beat you up here, I like the idea of what you're trying to do, and I guess what I'm worried about is what's going to protect the business owner. So I think, who, who's the councilor, is it, is it James, are you the councilor there? So have you had the opportunity to speak to any of the owners of the industrial properties in the neighborhood to say what their feelings are, or are you going to put in a provision, Mr. Owner, to tell the people when they rent, hey, by the way, they're going to have backup alarms, and they're going to have, you know, tailgates on their dump trucks, that are going to make noise, and it's going to be before seven o'clock in the morning, and later than three at night, what's going to prevent them from complaining like 24/7?
This is a very popular argument you're raising, and I hear it, I've heard it.
I can't believe that I.
It's like, why do we put this? But I guess the only thing I would say is, we'll take the blinders off the people that we show the unit to, and they'll, if they look to the, to the right and they look to the left, they're going to see two active industrial users, they'd be a little silly to think.
Later. I, I'll tell you a story, Councilor, I'll tell you a story. Gillette Corporation thought the same thing, we'll take the blinders off, right? They're going to build over in Boston-Walk corporations, old buildings, we'll take the blinders off, they spent $700,000, but you know what Gillette insisted? Every time somebody buys a condo or moves in there, they sign an agreement that says right on, they recognize in bold letters, you're moving into an industrially zoned area, there are no time constraints on loud noises, on trucks coming in and out of the property, and you buying this property or you renting this property, you've actually lost your right to say, stop that backup alarm at seven o'clock in the morning because it's waking me up, because you don't have that right to do that.
Yeah, that's a good point.
They make them sign something.
Yeah.
Now, I'm not an attorney like you, I'm just a dumb crane operator.
These are going to be for sale or rentals, so they're rentals, and certainly, so Steve's going to continue to manage and, and rent these properties, and, and that, if that's a condition that the board feels is necessary to put in a provision that, that, that tenants be advised of the industrial zoning of the area?
Well, I, I mean, just to, to try and protect the industrial property too, that spends a lot of money on taxes.
I agree with you, I understand, I understand, it's a valid, it's a valid argument, and we can certainly agree to a provision like that, that Steve, as the owner, or whoever owns it in the future, has the obligation to advise tenants in writing on their lease that there's, it's an industrial use and that they're buying an industrial use. And that, and, yeah, I can't tell them, I can't necessarily say they can, they're going to waive any rights or complaints in the future, but certainly, we can advise them accordingly.
Why can't you tell them they're waiving their rights?
I don't know that you can do that.
Well, we got Gillette's now driven out of Boston, been here since 1898, because all around them, they got people going, it's too loud.
Gillette has better attorneys than me, so.
Oh, I don't know. It seems as though your batting average up here is pretty good.
No, 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 but I guess I don't have these issues.
Plus, and this project will go before the zoning board as well, and that's really the, the board that is concerned with the use of the property, determines that the use is appropriate.
And the other thing that I would just say, in this particular case, is, is presently residential. So it's a little different, we're not taking it, I mean, no, no, the use, the use of the site is presently residential, even though it's in an industrial zone. And I'll tell you, the industry uses in this area as, as the industrial uses all throughout the city are going to have the same challenge, because this 325 unit's being built just two.
I know, just this block.
Just one block away.
Just missed it.
No, I know, no, I know, but I mean, so, I, I know, that's the, that's a real challenge, and I think a lot of these zoning districts, you know, a, a lot of them housed a lot of the industrial people that were working in that particular area, right? So they created housing in that industrial zone. This house probably was built to house people that were working in these industrial businesses locally, but, but we're not changing the use of that site today, it is residential today, and I think those tenants have lived there pretty comfortably despite the industrial commercial use. So that's our presentation.
Thank you.
Out of here.
Thank you, Councilor.
This is a public hearing, so if anybody would like to speak on this application, please feel free to raise your hand. Also, there are sign-in sheets, you can sign in, sit here for or against a project.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
James Devine, 117 Cross Street. We did hold a community meeting, some people came with some concerns and questions, the, they were all basically answered, so nobody really seems to have much of an issue. Like you said, there's going to be a large buildings, 300 and something, built right on the backside of that, I believe, one block away, not even half a block, because it would be connected. It looks really good, I'd just like to ask that, any trees that, they said they're going to save some trees, if they aren't able to keep them there while they're doing construction, that they, I know there's a law for it, but I'd like to make sure it's replaced and whatever's in the rendering to kind of make it look the same. Just because that area's pretty much depleted of trees, Albertine Street has quite a few, but Branch has not so many, so I'd like to make sure that they keep them as much as they can. And other than that, I think it's a good project for the neighborhood.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone else like to speak on this application? I think we're going to continue this matter.
We are going to continue, it, it, it's an open, the department did submit this, or send this out for independent peer review, they came back with a, a time kind of in, into April for a report issued, it's a little late, so I'm a little concerned if we were to recommend a one-month return on this. I'm, I'm thinking the recommendation would be to, to be clean, and be back, hopefully get all the answers, you know, answered, so I, I think that is, is where we're at. Attorney, Attorney Fleming, is two months agreeable?
We understand that's agreeable.
Okay, just, just to have a nice, you know, clean review on this.
I guess, I guess the only thing I would ask, if this is for the director, but we also need zoning board of appeals approval, and because this is an industrial site that requires variance to allow for residential in an industrial zone, I wonder if we could get before the, the zoning board of appeals to act on this matter while we're awaiting final resolution of this matter from the, from the planning.
I think that's fair, when member Shaughnessy started to raise some concerns about the industrial area, I, I sat here and started to sketch out that this board has approved residential up at the elevation apartments.
Right.
Recently, the Galvin Companies was in to convert a, a commercial building to residential in industrial area, and we've mentioned the large residential that we've approved, so I, you, you, the city or this board, the department is favorable to residential in this zone, so I, I think we could lend a support letter, or at least acknowledge this review, and we're going through the review and supportive.
Board, yeah, because oftentimes the zoning board will kick me back until planning has acted, so if there's a, a letter of indication that it would be acceptable to you, that the zoning board would act on this, the only reason I raise that is I think Mr. Austin would like to get in the ground kind of early in the summer months, and if we're into May, then we're talking about a June for appeals, so if I could get a decision from the zoning board around that time, that would be helpful.
Okay, now, is, this is the use variance, but we also, I'm not sure, I haven't fully looked at any of the dimensional requirements.
That would be dimensional variance.
We've got the special permit parking waiver under this, so we can cover, this board can cover some of that dimensional relief, but the buildings also.
It does.
Really? Because we don't have a corresponding residential requirements in industrial zone. So double-checking.
Back, I believe, was an issue.
Gotcha, okay, if you go with the, with the existing industrial? I think on the use, we're comfortable, the dimensional, just, I get a little concerned, but I, I, I think, I think what you heard today, the farmer's porch maybe on the building too, but the driveways and the landscape area, that, that's site, not building. Yeah, so.
That's fine, otherwise it's acceptable.
If, if the board agrees that a use variance, you know, was, would likely be supported here.
Yes.
Do you, so do you need a use variance, do you think, because you're, you said it's pre-existing non-conforming multifamily?
Depends on the building inspector's determination on that. Prior, the building inspector may have issued a determination on that, but I, I request, I think that we'd like to request the use variance, yeah.
Okay.
Very good. So with that, the recommendation would be to continue the matter to the May 15th meeting.
Is there a motion?
Motion to continue to May 15th?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye. Gillette's got nothing on you, Eddie, nothing on you, buddy.
There you go, you know how to use this, Gabrielle? The little arrows there go forward and backwards. Just don't, that doesn't work on TV screens.
Okay, so next item on the agenda, it's our business meeting.
I know that's a lot.
Presentation on the city's ongoing hazard mitigation plan update.
Excellent, Mr. Chairwoman, through you to the board, I would like to welcome Gabrielle Belfit from the engineering firm of Ty &amp; Bond, she's here to make a presentation to the board. The hazard mitigation plan is a plan administered by the federal government, we're required to update it every five years, so we're probably in the end of the beginning or the middle of the updating of the process, and we have enough data that it's time, I think, to appear before this board to start some of the public conversation with the analysis. So without further ado, Gabrielle Belfit from Ty &amp; Bond, thank you.
Thank you. I think the last time we were before the planning board was December 2018, and were any of you on the planning board then?
Yes.
So it's all, all new people? You're not sure?
I was.
I was like, not sure. All right, well, that's just good to kind of put it in perspective. We're, we're really glad to be here today, and I appreciate your time to listen to this. What I'm hoping to do is kind of frame how we're doing the five-year updates, I want to tell you a little bit about what's new and different this time doing the update as compared to when we did it in 2019, and then just share some of the new information and mapping that we have, which I think is kind of exciting, see how you might be able to use it going into the future. So we have a situation here where Quincy's current plan is due to expire on, at the end of April, and we came on board December, January, and we are doing an expedited five-year update. And the only reason this is possible is that Rob and his staff are awesome, and that we have a really great core team, which is made up of representatives from all of the different Quincy departments and staff that have anything to do with hazard mitigation plan, from emergency management to buildings, parks and rec, health departments, and many others. So that core team and the planning team are following our lead with assignments and questions, and we're gathering the extra information we need to do this expedited review to hopefully get it back to you again in May, hopefully, for you guys to do, to have an opportunity to review a final draft plan, and then we will do a public review, and then you as a board will vote to send it to MEMA for, for their review, and then FEMA. So the timeline is going to look something like, we'll have the. So the timeline is going to look something like we'll have the draft in May, everyone is going to get to review it. We'll come back to you for a vote in June. And then FEMA, MEMA review process, hopefully will be done by September. So. Oops, what I'm going to refer back to a couple of times is some of the new things in this plan is how we have to expand our public engagement, some of the tools we're using to do a better job with our vulnerability assessment tool we have for looking at your community assets. And everything is focused, the whole part of the plan is putting forth mitigation actions that the town could implement with funding from state, federal sources. So the question, which is good to ask, why do we need to prepare this plan? And if you, if the city would like to have the opportunity to apply for federal funds from FEMA's Hazard Mitigation Program, it is a requirement, and this is per the Disaster Mitigation Act of 2000. The plan is also a great opportunity to document historic impacts on natural hazards and the vulnerabilities of specific community assets. It's a way of taking many different projects and running them through a methodical prioritization method, which are set up around meeting many different community goals, not just hazard mitigation. And you guys are part of the FEMA community rating system. And having an approved updated plan gives you points. And the score, your community score directly correlates with reductions in homeowners flood premiums. So it's a dollar value to have that plan for your residents. And increasingly, state agencies have put a requirement for their grant programs to give extra points to a community project that was in the hazard mitigation plan. So it's not just the brick grants and it's also CZM grants, municipal vulnerability preparedness grants, and also EPA congressional directed spending. So having a list of your projects in hazard mitigation plan is very helpful for that. And the last one on my bullet here is we do have the opportunity to get information out to the public on the risk of natural hazards and the benefits of mitigating them, so the community recovers more quickly. Kind of big picture, how the planning process works here. We're really looking at identifying the highest natural hazard risk in the community and what the most vulnerable assets are, and then defining projects that mitigate those risks in such a way the assets will be protected even in the face of climate change. So our hazard mitigation plan is basically, you can think of it as a bucket for funding list for federal and state projects. And we're trying hard to get many of those projects set up so that they are helping sites or facilities adapt to future hazard impacts as well. So very specifically, what we have to do in this update is bring the plan to be consistent with the new State Hazard Mitigation and Climate Action Plan that was released in December of last year. So we're kind of just getting into what are the new things in the state hazard plan. And Quincy's plan has to be consistent with the state. FEMA also last year came out with new planning policies. So the hazard mitigation plan we had in 2019, we had to look at it and see what's changed in the planning policy that we now have to address. And one thing that has changed is requirement to address climate change. Another is to expand public outreach to make sure that we were involving and considering equity in our mitigation actions. So, and ideally, the mitigation actions will incorporate climate adaptation, as I mentioned before. So talking a little bit about how we're going to expand our public outreach. The idea here is that we'll be contacting existing advocacy networks and employers and letting them know about the planning process. And then hoping to identify short and long-term mitigation measures that address specific climate disparities in the city of Quincy. And I just popped up a little graphic there of one of the census tracts in Quincy. And it's just interesting to note, can you tell me that geographic location, Rob? Is that from the location on the highway?
Yeah, it looks like that.
Is that?
Just off of East Millwood Square.
Right.
But that's Quincy.
President's Golf Course is.
Okay.
I believe so.
Okay, yeah, it should be Quincy. So that's like 52% of that one census tract is in a flood plain. 20% of the properties have a flood risk. And 20% of the population living in that census tract have language disparities. So that's, you know, that's in my mind, that is a good area for us to be targeting mitigation strategies because fixing those is going to really help the population there that needs it the most. One thing that we did do in 2019 is we set up the Hazard Mitigation Plan and all of our analysis in geographic areas. And the geographic areas that are shown there, they loosely correspond to the watershed areas. And all of our analysis, our inventory of the community assets, our analysis of the vulnerability, it's done by these geographic areas, so you can compare them area to area to area. And that makes some, you know, for interesting plan. The community assets are 325 sites and facilities that the city has identified that are very important to the city of Quincy. There are social assets, infrastructure assets, natural resource assets, as well as economic ones. And those sites and facilities are very important to enable the community to recover from a natural disaster. So that's why they are chosen. These are all available on an ArcGIS dashboard, which is online and available to anyone. I believe you can get, still access that link on the planning board page, is it, or is it?
I still believe it's there.
Still believe it's there. So we're updating that right now. And the community asset, you can scan, you can go to different geographic areas. And you can turn on different layers to see flood zones, sea level rise, and a couple of other layers that relate to vulnerability. What did I do?
Presentational.
Oh, I don't know what I did. Anyway. So our mission statement, I'm just going to put it up there, you can read it. It's the same one that we had in 2019. I think it's still relevant. Next month, we're going to be meeting together as a core team to see if there's any modifications we want to make. But it is really reflective of looking at actions to address climate change and making sure we're compatible with that. So just kind of what's new with the natural hazards and climate change information. I mentioned the State Hazard Mitigation Plan and Climate Action Plan just was released in December. And there is new information about the natural hazards. These are the 15 natural hazards that are included in the plan. And Quincy has to address all of those hazards that apply. The top natural hazards for Quincy are coastal erosion, coastal flooding and storm surge, inland flooding. I'm sorry, I forgot to put a star on that one. Also severe winter weather and severe winter storms. Since 2018, had four presidential declared disasters, so it's actually been relatively quiet for the last five years. But if you look at extreme events, there've been 20 coastal flooding events, a whole lot of tornadoes. I don't think Quincy had any tornadoes today. No tornadoes here.
Only during election year.
Yes. And temperature warnings, both for heat and cold, which have impacted Quincy. So if you look at those top natural hazard events, coastal flooding, extreme temperatures, inland flooding, winter storm, four out of five applied to the city of Quincy. In the state plan, they're really looking at which natural hazards have the most impact and have the most disproportionate impact to EJ communities. And again, for the city of Quincy, coastal flooding and storm surge, inland flooding, severe winter storms, which were identified as the top hazards for Quincy, are all in that list of the top priority impacts of the state. So the state is going to be looking to Quincy to target those natural hazards in their plan. Just a real quick list, it's just kind of reiterating what the historical events have been for floods and the list of the top natural hazard risk for the city of Quincy. And really, since 2018, when we had those back-to-back nor'easters, Riley and Skarlar, those record-setting high water levels in January of 2018, things have been pretty quiet. Just 2022, one severe winter storm, and then Hurricane Lee in 2023. I guess we also did have a very, very high water table in January, a very high.
Yeah, I mean, if I could jump in real quick.
Sure, sure.
This is a spot I, the weather, right? And I'm challenging, you know, the team, you know, these are one-off events. But I think what we've seen, going all the way back to the blizzard winter, 2016, is it seems like a weather pattern sets in, and then you get a series of storms. So I think there's a cumulative effect, not just these big ones. And I think that's what we just experienced with the high tide. We've got a saturated water table, and then you add a little storm, an inch of rain or 30 miles an hour, it seems to be common now. You line up a couple of those storms, and what are the impacts to the system? So that's, you know, traditionally, historically, yeah, it's just big storms we're tracking. But I think we're starting to look at, you know, what kind of local weather data we can start tracking. And it's such a micro kind of analysis wind direction, right? And where it pushes the waves, does it push it up the Ponson?
You guys could do fine with the hurricane, but the nor'easters are like you guys out.
Well, that's what we're seeing with normal astronomical high tides is starting to, you know.
I had water on my driveway last week.
Yeah, with no storm.
No storm, yeah, just super high tides and sea level rise, which is a perfect segue to our climate change projections. Yeah, so we are, this is from the state plan. So this is Massachusetts information, but by 2050, up to 30 high heat days per year with a temperature increase up to eight degrees Fahrenheit. And by 2070, Massachusetts is expected to receive up to 42% more winter precipitation. We think it's wet now. And oops, didn't mean to do that, sorry.
2070, property on the top of Blue Hills is going to become pretty pricey.
I guess so. And those severe strong winds, tornadoes, and the extreme intense precipitation events, very, very heavy, has increased by 55% since 1958. So the impacts is really now what we need to start thinking about. So there's increased temperatures, heat-related illness, ecosystem health, agriculture, demands on energy, and stress on our infrastructure. We're going to see a couple of slides talking about stress on infrastructure coming up that will surprise you. Here's a good slide that just kind of helps you think about how temperatures in the future are going to feel more like summers in the south. So the state plan is looking at high global emissions scenario. They're saying, the last plan, they were like, oh, well, we'll look at intermediate to high. They've made the decision that they're going to do planning for the high global emissions scenario. So they stopped changing them around. By 2070, our summer temperatures are going to feel like South Carolina. South Carolina, yeah, South Carolina. In terms of heavy precipitation, that is obviously increased risk of flooding, damage to property, and also changes to rainfall and snowfall patterns. So we're seeing that now.
Yeah, so that last bullet.
That's right. And then sea level rise for the city of Quincy, 2019, we're looking at that intermediate scenario with, you know, from less than a foot up to two and a half feet of sea level rise. The state is saying, plan for the high global emissions. And that is quite a bit more than that. That's over four feet of sea level rise by 2070. So that is, you know, that is their recommendation. Massachusetts now has available to the whole coast a coastal flood risk model. It was developed for the city of Boston for, what's the, MassDOT? Is it, yeah, for MassDOT.
Yeah.
Sorry.
MassDOT.
And this was developed by Woods Hole. They, it was so well-received and reviewed in extensive detail by the scientific community. They developed this model for all of Massachusetts. So it is available to us now to use in our analysis for Quincy properties. And it's much better than in our previous one. We use what's called a bathtub model. You're just taking sea level rise and you're applying it to the land surface and you're saying, okay, well, now we're going up one foot, now we're going up two feet. This model is a dynamic model. It includes storm flooding, winds, waves, wave setup, storm surge. It includes the coastal structures that are protecting it, the seawalls. It includes flows from the Ponson River. So it's extremely detailed. It doesn't just look at the hundred-year storm. It's looking at hundreds of thousands of documented storms. So this very, very dynamic model is, we're going to have a couple of slides there. We might even do a little spin through what it looks like. Zoom in on your neighborhood. So just kind of looking at some of the information from the state climate assessment, which informed the State Hazard Mitigation Plan. For the city of Boston, Boston Harbor, sorry, the Boston Harbor area, they looked at what were the top climate impacts to different sectors of the Commonwealth. So for the Boston Harbor, the top impacts for the human sector or society are the heat-related illnesses and deaths due to extreme heat events. And that can also negatively impact learning and productivity. It's also related to worsening air quality, delay in emergency services, and disruption to the food supply. For infrastructure, the top impact was damage to train infrastructure from extreme heat events causing track buckling, flooding, and underground infrastructure. So I was very surprised by that impact to rails. So, and that is something to consider for you guys. Loss of urban trees, which are vulnerable to the high heat and drought conditions, and are also more susceptible to invasive plants. For the natural environment, this is not surprising. The marine water ecosystem because of warming and ocean acidification. And freshwater ecosystems, again, due to warming waters. An increased runoff, stormwater runoff carrying pollutants. An increased runoff from stormwater runoff carrying pollutants are the top threats. And they have added, oops, they have added governance as a sector to consider impacts for climate change. So that is going to definitely affect the city of Quincy as your affordable housing units may become damaged by flooding and economic losses and business interruptions. So just, I'm going to just show you a couple of highlights about how we do vulnerability analysis. First thing that we look at is we look at your repetitive loss claims. And are you guys familiar with what repetitive loss claims are? Just explain very, very briefly. Repetitive loss claims are when a homeowner that has national flood insurance has had a claim of two or more claims of $1,000. And then severe repetitive loss is if you have four or more separate claims of $1,000, $5,000 each, or if two claims exceed the total value of the property. Quincy ranks the fifth highest in the state of Massachusetts for repetitive loss claims. From 2017 to 2023, severe repetitive loss properties have increased from 174 to 206. And that is a total over the period of the NFIP program, from 540 total claims to 679 claims. There have been a doubling in severe repetitive losses in the past five years from a total of 73 claims to a total of 126 claims over 22 properties. So that if you want to know who the other communities are and have that worse than you to make you feel better. Situate is number one with 2,254 repetitive loss properties. Revere is number two. Then there's Hull and Marchfield are ahead of you. So those are the four that are ahead of you. So kind of looking at those repetitive loss claims gives you a real good idea of where the big hits are in terms of flooding in the city of Quincy. Those blue areas shown there are the hundred-year floodplain. And you'll see, it looks like most of those repetitive losses are in the floodplain. But in fact, quite a few of them are not, they're outside of it. So we're looking at, are zoomed in, our geographic area here. Zooming in on Hausneck Germantown, which boasts the most number of repetitive loss properties of anywhere. And you see that probably makes a lot of sense to you. Here's a quick view of Furnace Brook, which of flooding there is inland flooding, not coastal flooding. And then here's one of Squanton Point, the Marina Bay area. I think something happened when I cut and paste. It seems a little distorted or something, but you see there. So we are, we look at considering, you know, not just, you know, repetitive losses, but what, you know, what was the, what were the historic examples of flooding from the point of DPW and created this area of flooding concern, which has yet to be updated. So I'm not going to go into too much detail because a lot of those projects have been built over the past five years. So we're thinking some of these areas of flooding concerns may have changed. And what the city has done, you know, in this five years is it's developed a inland flooding model that goes to a great amount of detail to account for flows that they can generate future flows. And they can also couple it with impacts coming from the sea in the places where there's tide gates or there's interconnections with the ocean. So that very detailed flood model will help the city design stormwater systems, help them, when a developer comes in and wants to do something, they'll say, well, wait, let's use the storm model to make sure that you're providing the right amount of capacity for the future. I mentioned the Massachusetts coastal flood risk model. We've just got that up and running now for the city of Quincy. We're overlaying all of the properties on it. And it allows us to look at exceedance probabilities of flooding, not just at the hundred-year level, but, you know, and looking to the left there, you can see the different colors. Areas that are in the gray are 100% probability of flooding, all the way down to 0.1%, like one in a thousand year flooding. This can be looked at for 2030, 2050, 2070. And we can look at it both as exceedance probabilities or we can also look at it as depth of flooding and see to what depth each area floods. We also today, just this afternoon, overlayed the historic properties on it. So we're going to be using this in our vulnerability analysis. These are some statistics from 2017. I just thought they would be of interest. You can see kind of in a summary of all of the properties and developed properties in the city of Quincy, 20% of them are at flood risk. And if you look into some of the higher impacted geographic areas, Marymount, Black Creek's area, 70% of all the developed properties are exposed to flood. And then you're looking at just not all of the properties. These are just looking at how badly do they flood? So here is just of the 500 parcels in the Hausneck Germantown area, 58 of them will flood at one foot. Another 100, 110, whatever, will flood at two feet. And then at four feet, all of them are flooding. So that's what this graphic is showing here. Do I have anything else? Nope. So I'm just going to show you a real quick slide here of what the high priority mitigation actions from 2017. And you can see of this long list, half of those have already been completed. So the city has been extremely active in the past five years. So next month, we're going to start putting together our new list of hazard mitigation actions for the new five-year plan. And Rob and Paul and Chung and others and Ally and Dave Murphy have all been writing down their thoughts. And we're going to be putting together very constructive documents with documentation about why the plans are being put forth to help with funding. And that is all I have. So I know it was a little longer than I wanted it to be.
I have some questions. Can I ask questions on this?
Please.
Are you a scientist or?
I'm an environmental scientist.
Okay, so one of my things I would add, so you said that Quincy, we have to be consistent with the plan, right? And we have to match the plan that the state wants. So everybody has to be on the same team, right?
Well, that's, that is what, that is the idea.
So what happens if Quincy isn't consistent, like with being on the plan? Other than like flooding, I get that.
So there's certain things that the FEMA policy dictates how a plan is put together. And the plan states that the, the community must address all of the state natural hazards identified in the state plan. So it has to address that, but they can say, well, that one doesn't apply to me because I'm inland, so I'm not going to look at coastal flood or tsunami. And so it's not, they're not saying the information has to be the same. They're just saying it has to be consistent with the approach. So there's, there's a lot of nuances. It's not, it's not just saying that they have to say it's the same.
All right, so I'm going to throw this out there and this isn't me, right?
Oh, no.
So, and it's unbelievable the timing that this is here tonight because I've been invited to go and listen to and discuss with the state. I'm a member over at Savern Hill Yard Club and the plan is to raise Morrissey Boulevard, like eight or nine feet, right? Which creates all kinds of problems for us at our little club because then you can't like get into the club. And so we want to be part of the discussions and say, well, before you build like the roadway eight feet high, I mean, now we're going to get it out of here. And then of course, how are you going to get underneath the expressway? If you're going to be eight feet higher. So, and I think this was, and you can, if anybody knows, you can correct me on this. It may have been attorney Bill Golden some years ago said, why aren't we doing the same thing that Holland does and build a dike from Deer Island, a dam from Deer Island? I know you, from Deer Island, all the way across.
I'm very familiar with it.
Right, because what we're spending on time, energy, money and effort to do this kind of stuff, we could spend, and we know we can do it because we build all kinds of stuff around here, right? So we could build the dike or the dam right across from Deer Island to Hull, put in some big channels with some locks and you wouldn't have to worry about this flood. And then we don't have to worry about, we don't have to Blue Hills.
Well, we would still have to worry about extreme, it would still rain. It wouldn't control us from rain, the wind would still flow. We would still lose our power lines, it's still going to be hot.
Isn't most of our thought, like the sea is going to rise, the big storms are the ones that really flood us the most. I'll give you, we have rain events. And there's going to have a big rain event down in Florida in the next few days. They're talking biblical, but I understand that. But I just don't see why the leaders aren't saying, let's look, like Bill Golden said it, why aren't we looking at putting in a dam right across from Deer Island over the hull? I don't understand.
Mr. Johnson, I would say that, that, that the idea of that flood barrier to, it will be down and up, it's going to be down for most of the time. And then it will, it will come up for extreme events. Now, sea level rise is happening and sea level rise is not an extreme event.
What's happening?
Sea level rise.
Oh, sea level rise, yeah.
And we get our high tides every day, our high tides.
Right.
And we get higher and higher. And as our high tides get higher and higher, they push groundwater being in groundwater rise. So there's kind of a cascading effect that no flood barrier can help us with.
It wouldn't even help us for the next 100 years?
It will probably take 100 years to build basically.
Well, I don't know about that. I mean, we could always pick up Austin and move it inland like 40 miles, but.
It's, it's a, it's a very, very interesting project.
Need a lot of equipment to build that.
A lot of cranes.
You would.
A lot of cranes, here, here.
To look and see where the assets are in the city, what's the likelihood of the impact? What's the consequence of the impact? And start thinking about it in ways that work for everyone. And so that's the purpose of the plan, getting the best scientific information we have. And we do have that the new state hazard mitigation plan and the 22 climate impact assessment is thousands of pages of documents, many, many, many scientists, and it's fabulous information. And now we have the flood risk model to help us. And the city has the inland stormwater model. So you've got a lot more tools to do meaningful vulnerability assessment. And then what would an adaption plan look like for the hardest hit, the most vulnerable, the ones where there's the most disparity? And start putting a plan together. So in another five years, we can have.
We could have, we could have the lock all built in five years. I mean, just, you know, I think you've done a great job. When I say Quincy leads the charge and says, never mind this stuff. Let's put, let's just put a dam from Deer Island right across, baby.
Quincy participates.
I know, I just, thank you, I think it was excellent, but.
Oh, well, I'm sorry it was long.
No, no, it's all right. No, this is great.
Yes, oh, yeah.
True things, Mr. Stevens just answered a question, you know, for people watching at home. This is going to be available online shortly.
There's a, yeah, we'll put it up after the board receives.
Sure.
This is tremendous.
It's really nice, yeah.
Thank you. I think there is one, there's one word in there, which, on slide six, bring the plan into compliance with it, should be really big, make the plan consistent with. That's, that's. I don't know, I just don't think it, it really shouldn't say compliance with. But is that, is that okay to not change it?
Yeah, that's perfectly fine. And also the, the information that we prepared five years ago is, is on the website. And it is on the front page under the resident tab. You'll scroll down and you'll see multi-hazard mitigation plan. So that has all our stuff from five years ago. This is sort of, we're at a point now in this presentation where we can, we're going to start putting this update information into that realm and we're going to add to it. We also have the planning board page where we'll put this up for a period of time as well.
Yeah, this is great stuff.
Yeah, so you've got, there's in those dots there are your identified community assets, the yellow one are societal, the green one are environmental. I don't know which pink or the other ones are, there's, anyway. There, yeah, so any, you can like click on any dot and it'll tell you what it is and where it is. Those, the colored, the colors there are the different exceedance probabilities. So if you're in black, you're, it's 100% that in 2030, this area will flood. And then you go up to like the areas in yellow are, or that light blue is the 1% exceedance probability. That's probably the closest match to like 100-year FEMA events. And then it goes all the way up to the 0.1% or the 1,000-year exceedance probability. So we don't have to just say, let's just look at 1%. We could say, no, let's, let's think about the 10%. You know, let's look about with much higher exceedance probabilities. So we know it's like more realistic, more certain to occur. So we, we can change this legend to 2050, 2070. If, do you know how to click on the layers? The left-hand side, little stack of papers, there, right there. And then just give it a second. Now scroll down and click the 2070 right there, the exceedance probability. Don't do flood depth. Next one down, yeah, click on the little eyeball right there. Okay, and now zoom in a bit there. So yeah, now we're looking at the 2070 exceedance probability. Jackson Field, it's like, it's your sailboat. So I don't know if there's anywhere you guys want to look at.
We need a bigger boat.
Any place you want, if you, if you, you can, if you close that, you'll put the legend back up. Yeah, and put the, close that on the right. Close that there and then put the key back up. Down, I think the key is under more. Nope. More, legend, there it is. There you go. So if you guys want to zoom in and you want to go to your house, you want to go anywhere?
Well, I know I get water, I know you don't have to show me.
Yeah, go, let's go drive somewhere because it's pretty interesting.
Would you say the new police station? That's a good idea, I think, because if they get flooded out there, are we going to do that?
Yeah, they're, they're at the 25% exceedance probability in 2070. And then there is also, you can also click on flood depth at 2070. But I just think it's more interesting just to look at exceedance probability for, for right now. So we're, we're going to do tables of analysis that will show these different projection periods and show what community assets are impacted at, you know, we're going to probably pick, you know, the 1%, the 20%, there's something, a couple of different probabilities. So, and again, this is, this is for coastal flood modeling. If you go to the north, it does capture all of the flooding of the Ponson River, but it doesn't include Town Brook. So we have to rely on your inland flood model that is put together with the Infoworks that the DPW has. We won't be using results from that because, from the inland model, so.
Well, we're monitoring back to what other communities are doing for inland, the inland modeling. You know, Department of Public Works has over the last number of years deployed resources to go out and map and geocode every catch basin. They've inspected all of the drain pipes. They've inspected all of the drain pipes and that's what's helped build the model.
Yeah.
So we've actually used it a few times.
In specific projects.
On specific projects that have come forward. Because it, you know, it identifies areas outside the normal flood bank.
Right.
Because of infrastructure. So that's the real key piece.
Right. And that's.
On flood model.
That, you know, that I mentioned that there's areas that flood and repetitive loss flooding, they're not mapped. They're not, they're not, you know, in the hundred year flood. They're not on this coastal flood. So that model is capturing it. And it's because of the previous area, the, the pipe sizes.
Infrastructure constraints.
Right.
Yep. Yeah. I mean, I think the most recent example is the Furnace Brook Parkway. You know, they were clearing a lot of trees and a lot of folks were concerned about the trees, but they added a winding path to the brook instead of a straight line.
Yeah.
And that move in and of itself created so much more area to store volume. You know, one of the issues we have in the city is the stormwater watershed from Quincy, but also our other neighbors, you know, outside, you know, away from the coast. All of their drainage is flowing down, you know, throughout our community as well. So what do we need to do when there's a storm surge, right? You know, and we're looking at areas, you know, like Black's Creek to store stormwater.
Open the gate.
For a period of time. Well, you know, working with our federal partners, whether it's Army Corps of Engineers or EPA, DBW is doing that, you know, every day. It's, it's a battle, time bond. You know, we have the benefit of working with the same firm that did the permitting for the Adam Shore seawall. So that was, you know, that takes, the environmental permitting just takes years. It takes.
That came up great. That's.
It, it, it really does. Well, that, that tree work on the Ponset was last year. That was in response to the floods back in 2010. So, so that was over 10 years to get to some of these action items. You know, and when it has the environmental permitting. So there's a lag to that. That's when the, when we do priority listing, one of the priorities is how long would it take to get you to get a shovel in the ground?
Yeah.
So sometimes seawalls rank low because they have a long permitting phase.
Right.
In some regards. So it's, that'll be the piece I think we'll focus on next is some of the priority rankings of the projects, you know, the next round of projects.
And we now have another tool to help us with projects, like flooding projects where there's a category of projects, like coastal flooding projects, like how do you decide which one to do first? Well, now you have a tool, you can look at probability. And so you can be saying, whoa, huh, oh geez. That not only can I see how many homes it will benefit, I can see, you know, what the sense of urgency is based on probability. And that will give it an additional scoring that we can add when we do prioritization. I don't know if I told you that or not. Maybe.
I would say in the time I've spent on this issue, you know, to get these new tools, the modeling, the computer, the mapping, it's an ink changer. You know, five years ago, I think we were digging up paper plans from prior plan update, you know, prior to that. So focusing on, you know, really expanding and incorporating what others are doing doesn't make sense if Austin or Brantory are doing different models that don't speak to each other because the water doesn't care.
Right.
And, and that was an interesting point we did at the last update. We did watershed boundaries for the district boundaries. Again, to break down watersheds and drainage, you know, to get to the projects and not use political boundaries or zoning boundaries to roads.
Right.
Using those natural drainage areas. So we make sure when we're looking at a specific asset, we know that primary watershed it's in. You know, I think the modeling we advanced when the hospital redevelopment came forward because that was on a high spot. And we got to see the impacts that a redevelopment on that site was going to have on the immediate area. You know, so that was very fascinating during the review back.
Neat.
It's just constantly getting better, you know? And that's, that's what we're trying to do.
I don't see the historic properties on there, so maybe he didn't refresh it. Anyway, but so these, these tools and these links, you know, will be available for anyone to use?
It's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
If you had your choice and you had a trillion dollars, would you build a dam across?
Sure.
Nice. I like that.
They just got to get another trillion dollars.
Just win, win the mega bucks this week.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And the final business meeting item is just the review and determination to endorse the denied approval not required plan. That's for 2021 Adam Street, Plan Board Case Number 2024 A and R O2. So that is here for our signature.
Great. Yeah. Madam Chair, are you to the board of this, I believe this third A and R plan?
Well, there was an A and R plan for the entirety of the five site development. There was a A and R plan for these two units. They're making an adjustment along one of the side yards at meat zoning. So it is approval not required. So.
Thank you, Ken.
Good night. Thank you.
Make a motion to adjourn. All is in favor.